Do additions and deletions first. Lauren has withdrawn her application for the time being. And Vermont 100 has postponed their permit next month. Take care of that. We have to still add in an executive session. We still have to do this. First. Agenda item will be to interview with she online. Alright, we can table that until future meeting. Are there any citizen comments about anything that's not on the agenda first? Okay. Eric, to your manager's report?
Yep, so a few quick things. One little word last night at the final audit. Um, two. They're starting the process. We have getting jobs.
We can only hear about every third word or so?
Is that better?
That's better.
At the point that I said you dropped the script.
I lied, that's not better.
Are you saying better?
That sounds better.
So again, let me know. So we started, I dropped the script, but uh, he's. Tom Bell here.
I'm so sorry, I think you have to hold it to your mouth.
It says PC speaker mode of use, which I think is.
That one sentence sounded better. But I can't hear you laughing.
But he's referring to his report now. Finally, as it was earlier, we're going to. We updated app right now. Just like before you hear. Yeah, once more time.
No, I know, I can.
Yes, we have Princeton, where the kitchen is awfully good. As other more recent ones. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, opposed, portion carries. Or in favor, one in absence? So we have the speed limit and here if you want to come on up. So we had two members do the speed survey. It showed an average speed, I forget which direction, which about, or eighty fifth percent. I think twenty eight and twenty nine. And you had mentioned that from where the, the speed tube was, this wasn't. In the road where you had thought that this meeting was a problem, is that accurate?
It's one of them. I mentioned. In here. So it was right by my front. Versus ours, anybody were. It's really slow down. It's very. Stuff, so everyone on the road would like it.
It can't be because the eighty fifth is above twenty five? Eighty fifth percent also, eighty five percent. Of the cars traveling the road. Are traveling without crashing. At that speed, so if you go, if you set speed limit is below that. Eighty fifth percentile, then you're making violators out of. People that aren't necessarily driving on safe, now you've mentioned the curves and the pedestrian horse and bicycle usage.
It's definitely.
But with the guidance that deals on legal cities and towns puts out. We're not supposed to set a speed limit below the eighty percentile. I think unless you have a number of crashes. But just with the information that we have, not allowed.
But what would we present as your.
You can't, so you can't set below thirty five without a speed survey on a gravel road. Speed survey doesn't support more. We do have. Intentions of putting for winter use, you know, all wheel drive, four wheel drive science up. We can maybe on that, but. Just sort of caution or. Caution twenty five, which is not forcible, but. Delivers a message to some. Because I mean, I'm one of the bicycles that uses that road and I, I agree with you on any road I want, or going slower. We're just, we're limited by what the statutes say and then what Vermont legal cities and towns puts out.
Was there anything above? Do, because I know. Really interesting. Beginning with. And have tried.
The Vermont legislators can change the statute, but I don't. If the statute changes, then that will give us more leeway, but with what we have right now. I know it's not what you wanted to hear, honey. Because that's still above the eighty fifth.
Very much.
Right.
So can we request another heat study at the bottom of the hill?
We can, oxygen rivers are. Our schedule that we set for, for doing speed reductions is to do that again in twenty. We can start planning that with two rivers for twenty, maybe four twenty two.
We get something.
Yeah. No, I know.
We do.
What can we do?
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, when you said signs will be popping.
They're, they're in, they're in, we talked about it with Mark Hunter, who's the new highway superintendent.
Yeah.
And so we can look at, when you do sign back. To go with that.
And. Should be.
Well, that's one of the ones that was already in the works, so this might go up on the same. Kind of figured out specifically. That's, that's, that would be the goal is to have it on both ends. That's, that's already the way it was being taught.
Great, thank you.
Yes. Global emergency management plan, next. Think I signed where I'm supposed to, in Princeton, where I should have signed, but. Now we have the EEI. Next.
Yes, so. Ray asked about this. Basically his background last year. Thirty thousand dollar dollars. For the purpose of. Please. Say. Hours. Good price for thousand, hundred dollars. Away from those equalities. What that wants to be get done. Uses. The road question. Forward this. Awesome, strategy over your question. Patients are going to look at it.
Much go ahead. And so at four point five percent, the eighty two thousand is that. If we go, I guess let me ask this question, if we go with the ten year municipal lease of four point five percent. We're presently budgeted for the amount that would be the. And then keep budgeting. See his name, are you on? Get it out. Do we need a motion, but we already have motions already?
Well, I think this is.
Is to choose to do a lease.
Yeah, I figured it's.
Six pretty done.
So. I would make a motion.
That's you.
So once we give the accurate numbers.
So I will let you guys know that we still can't hear anything, like I heard Ray make a motion, but I didn't hear the motion at all.
We can hear about every fifth word, I'd say. Seems kind of like you can't do anything about it, though.
Seven hundred and fifty five thousand forty. And then we got the.
Is that audio better?
That last ten seconds was better.
Okay, let's try that for a little bit.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll, we'll see how this goes.
So make a motion to table this until we have accurate figures.
Sure, yeah, that's, okay, that's. And second to bounce.
Okay, so there's a motion to table the EEI. Loan until final numbers are in. It's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we just say a few words? We, we zoomed in just to be part of that discussion and we couldn't hear anything and you're already voting on it, so. We just, we don't know what you just said about EEI, could you please just review that for us?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So the site board's plan is to. Table the final approval pending a schedule that'll show the cost over the next ten years. But to go, the, the goal is to go forward the six forty seven, five fifty number.
Okay.
And just to see what that cost will be per year for the town.
Okay.
But the feeling I believe in the board was they're in favor of this, they just want to see what the cost will be.
And I just want to check in with you, Eric, that the, the rate will. I think the rate has like a thirty day expiration and then it'll likely go up again because of inflation right now, so we want to. Approve the cost as soon as possible and make sure it doesn't go up.
Yeah, so I'm, I'll get the, reach out to the two of us today and then it'll be on the agenda for two weeks from now for the board to vote on.
Okay, thank you.
Which brings us to. The sewer commissions. The first one is the carryover from last month. When I spoke with. Olden Karen. She states that she is required to be a one bedroom. Can't have a second bedroom or second, you know, can't fill the second bedroom because of her lease. And so I think with that information. We could entertain. Changing her billing to a single bedroom, but it would still go back to the date. Of the beginning of the bill, not just when she took residency.
And for those units, Heritage condo pays the water bill, right? That's what, that's what she said earlier.
That part I don't remember what, how she put it, I just know that the water bill is a. Joint usage, like the meters on more than one unit.
Yeah.
Which is why she's billed by bedroom and not by water usage.
But if they wanted to get accurate sewer bills, they should have the condo association get the sewer bill and charge the residents.
Right. I.
But that's.
I think it might be appropriate in the future to talk about. Having the shared usage. Water bill be consolidated.
Yeah.
At the sewer level, but.
Yes.
And she said she would get a letter from the condo association stating that it's a one bedroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Alright, I'm, I'll, I'll make the motion to. Prove this is a one bedroom, a one person, a one bedroom. To a bill.
That's that's a second.
Okay, so there's a motion that's been seconded to. Amends. His olden buries. Sewer built from a two bedroom to a one bedroom. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, no opposed, motion carries four in favor with one absent. And then we have one seventy Atwood from the Curry. He's. A two bedroom. Build at the two bedroom. But is asked to be built at the one bedroom because his wife passed away. But the. If he doesn't, it looks like he doesn't have a water meter, so therefore it's. It's in the villages up above like Sanoco or the unmanned make mobile pumps now. It might. His house might actually be overlying the town, but that's right in that area. But it is a two bedroom.
Would.
Do it, Carrie.
What's our, our policy? Isn't it based on bedrooms?
Yes, it's based on, on bedrooms. In absence of a water meter.
I think we, our hands are kind of tied there, right?
That's, that's kind of my feeling.
Yeah, because we're always, it's a stop.
Right.
I mean, I feel bad, but.
I know. Yeah.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but the policy is kind of the policy.
Yes, that's right.
So I don't.
I will, I will just make a point that we have not been billing based off bedroom, it has been single. Double and family rate based on occupancy. And that is the issue we have come across because we don't, we have no way of truly knowing how many people are in the building. But I will know in the past, we have made like people with five bedrooms are paying single rates, so it is. Not something we have been strict about, I just want to.
Oh.
Want, want to bring that up.
I think.
Well, why not?
Why we haven't, I don't know, I'm just saying what we have done in the past.
It's hard to prove who's actually living.
Maybe.
In, in the building, is my assumption that.
Yeah.
Someone says it's just me in here and are we. Going to the house asking to walk in and see, see who's actually live.
No, but.
I think why we switched the policy to number of bedrooms.
Right, except it's supposed to be number of bedrooms and not.
So then it never, it just never got implemented, is that what, is that what it is?
Yeah, we were, we were going to switch to bedrooms, that was going to happen, but we never actually did that, and that's the issue.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, so I thought that when we reverted back, and I guess I was just mixing up which. Which direction it was.
Well, I, I thought that we're going to do, if you have a water meter, you pay for your water meter.
Yes.
If you have, if you don't have a water meter, you pay by bedroom, I thought that's what we agreed to last year.
I guess, I think what.
We didn't, but we could.
Right, we never went to the official new billing method. So we, what's on the books, I think is what was on the books, which. Nikki is saying is when we, which got us into this mess. But I suppose if. The ruling is, or I guess the rules. Are still technically what they were, then that gives us a little leeway, but.
She passed away January of this year.
So twenty.
So she. There.
Three?
Yeah.
Yes, so that.
I mean, going.
The bill is technically from the year before, right?
Yeah.
Well, I will let you know that this gentleman is not looking to change this year's bill, he's just looking to change future bills.
Okay, okay.
Alright, that's.
Then I just say that we. Able that till we figure out how we're going to start. Proper. Because if we change it now, our bill will change it back later.
Well, I think what Nikki is saying is right now it's, we're still billing by the single double occupancy. So in that sense, if the board decided to do and change it. Oh, you're right that we go forward, yeah, because he's asking for future bills.
Right.
And since the future bills haven't been created yet, that we should wait for the policy before we decide, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Alright, so this has been tabled.
Pending a discussion of future sewer usage discussion.
Alright, so when you're mapping out the, the agenda for the year.
They'll be.
We can.
So is going to be on a lot. A lot of meetings.
Then we'll follow up with him and let him know when that's.
Yeah.
Planned for in the future. Now it's not just tabled indefinitely.
Yeah. But he's going to. Just go, it's here, so.
But with this year, yeah.
Yeah, I think going forward.
So that leaves us with, there's no executive session.
So Joe, just back, number one was sewer billing.
Oh, yes.
So this, me, so Ray asked about this, I think a few months ago, maybe my first meeting, about. The potential to bill quarterly for sewer billing. I want to thank you for your patience, we wanted some time to kind of do some research. So I have a little bit of information to share about that, one is we reached out to the aqueduct and asked. Hypothetically, if they could do quarterly billing, they said not at this time, there would not be something they would be for. But potentially in the future, they could do it. So that kind of stops us in our tracks. But they did also mention that if we were to ask for more readings, there would be an increased cost to get those readings. They not give me a figure on what that cost would be, but right now we pay twelve thousand dollars for one reading, so whether that'd be twelve thousand dollars four times, whether it be. You know, twenty four thousand dollars, they weren't, they weren't able to say, but it would be an increased cost to the sewer budget. Along with it costs approximately. Five hundred and forty three dollars to send out the billings once a year, so again, if you're doing that quarterly, you'll get just over two thousand dollars with the current price of stamps, you know, they always go up. But so there is a cost to this along with, you know, the office time as well. But as of right now, Aqueduct's not something that's interested in doing, but going forward, potentially they are, but then there'll be the added cost to it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have the minutes from March twenty first.
Like the most, move the minute from March twenty first.
The motion's been made and seconded to approve.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. Four with one absence. And I have nothing else, does anyone have anything else?
We have the. Judith on that. There's some.
Yes.
She didn't.
She didn't come, so if she wants to, we can certainly reschedule that.
Okay.
In the future, no problem with that. Other than that, I would understand a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.